Good evening and welcome. This is an Olympia Individual Endorsement Research Team event with candidates vying for the Olympia City Council seat, position six. My name is Ed Stanley and my co-moderator is Edie Harding, and we are the endorsement research team members who have been working on the only city council races for 2025. We have three candidates with us, and they are the candidates who returned our research questionnaire. Thank you very much for doing that. Only candidates who returned the questionnaire can be considered for endorsement by the OI membership. The endorsement vote will happen after the endorsement research team presentation, which is planned for June 21 at 10:00 a.m. Our candidates this evening are Robert Vanderpool, Justin Stang, and Darlene Simkins. Robert Vanderpool, who presently holds the position six seat, is seeking his first elected term. He was appointed to the position in January 2024 to fill a vacancy. Justin Stang and Darlene Simkins are both seeking their first terms on the city council. We will begin this event by asking each of the candidates to give us some information about themselves and why they are seeking this city council position. Other information the reviewer or the viewers might be interested in might be where you're from, how long you've lived in Olympia, your education and employment, and whether you've had experience managing the budget for large organizations. Each candidate will have five minutes to respond. And first, we'll start with Robert Vanderpool.
Yeah, so I've been living in, my name's Robert Vanderpool. I've been living in Olympia, Washington for about eight years. I came out here to go to the Evergreen State College. I got my undergraduate and my master's in public administration at the Evergreen State College just a few years ago. I have, you know, I work for the state. I'm a state worker. I work at Labor and Industries. I've been working there for about three years. I'm currently on paid family leave because of my newborn. I'm hoping that over time I can switch around to different agencies, but I am proud to be a state worker. When it comes to experiences of large budgets, right now, the city, I've had the experience of being on the city council through one year where we saw a dramatic drop in our sales tax, followed by some cuts that we had to make, followed by this year's work, which will include doing some priority-based budgeting. That means we were doing an analysis of every program area in the city in order to ensure that we have clarity on everything we spend our dollars on, from the general fund all the way down to how much we spend per program area for each FTE and so on and so forth. Currently, you know, I guess to say the biggest challenges right now would be trying to figure out, you know, how do we navigate this budget crisis? How do we, as a city, ensure that our grants and funding is being there when we're being threatened by the federal government? How do we ensure that we meet the needs of the public while going through, you know, a situation where a lot of people, you know, can barely afford to live in the city, right? I think part of the reason why I want to continue to stay on Olympia City Council is trying to work with the affordability crisis, right? We have a lot of folks, colleagues of mine, the state, who can't afford to live here, whether it's childcare costs, how cost of housing, wages, so on and so forth. There's a number of factors that we've looked at as a city through the Olympia Strong program and, and how do we, how do we fund that? How do we work with our partners in the community to meet some of those needs, such as the school district, such as the county, such as our sister cities in Lacey and Tumwater? And how do we navigate through those needs in an effective way? And so part of the reason why I want to continue to be on council is to, in order to meet those needs. So, yeah, I don't know how much time I got left, but kind of answered a lot of what I was gonna say. I'm so used to it being less than five minutes. I'm sure Justin remembers knows that as much as I do, and Darlene knows that, but yeah, so you know, I really, I'll have to say, to finish it out, I, I really, I want Olympia to be a city in the next 10 years where people want to be here, right? Where we're a welcoming, accessible city, where people aren't constantly worried on whether or not they can afford to buy a home or if they can afford their rent, right? I really want us to be a thriving city for all. And so, you know, that's part of the reason why I'm here, because all of the crazy things that are going on out there in the world with federal government, I really, and I really want people to feel confident in our city and confident in our city council and our ability to get there. And so that's why I want to continue to be on council, and I'm always open to talking to the public. I've, I've knocked on probably a thousand doors now. I've talked into dozens of, dozens and dozens of people over this last year over coffee. And so I'm, I'm proudly here. I'm raising my son here and, and right here on the west side. And so, yeah, I love Olympia. I love being here. And yeah, that's why I want to continue to be here. So.
Thank you very much. We'll pose that same question to Justin.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you taking the time and having me here tonight, obviously. My name is Justin Stang, and I'm running for Olympia City Council. I have a bachelor's degree in history from Providence College. I've lived here in Washington for more than 20 years now. My first experience with Olympia was back in 1995. I went to a rock show at the Capitol Theater backstage and fell in love with the city then, but didn't move here until my wife got a job as a public educator in 2011. So Olympia has been my home for the last 14 years. I started out as a renter in downtown Olympia. We had a tiny 300 square foot apartment on Legion Way, and it was a, it was a tough time financially. I found work at the South Sound YMCA, where I worked as the weekday opening shift, a member services representative. 4:30 in the morning, I'd walk from my apartment on Legion Way over to the Franklin Street YMCA, unlock the door and open it to get things started for the day. I was also at that time a musician, and I played in multiple local bands, probably at every establishment, cupcake shop, pub, bar, in the downtown Olympia area. And, and we ended up moving to another apartment and all told, lived in downtown Olympia for five years. As we really struggled in those days, I found a job in the shellfish industry with the Hamahama Oyster Company, where I worked my way up to a management position, running the wholesale and sales operations within the executive leadership team. So while I don't have experience with a budget quite, quite the size of the city of Olympia, I do have experience managing large budgets. We were founding members of the Shellfish Growers Climate Coalition, and I became an active, I became active in protecting and stewarding our natural resources. I spent every day at Hamahama advocating for our employees and for the environment and, and helping that business grow, obviously, in managing that budget. A few years later, my wife and I bought a house on the west side, which is where I am today. And then earlier this year, I became a policy analyst for the Pacific Coast Shellfish Growers Association. It's a local nonprofit trade organization that represents 100 family and tribal shellfish farms. We focus primarily on clean water and a healthy shellfish industry. As part of my position, I would attend meetings with elected officials, and at some point, somebody would always ask, what can we do to help? You know, you all have a lot going on and are advocating for us at the federal level and at the state level. What can we do? And inevitably, their response was always, get involved. We need more people to be involved. We need more people to be involved at the local level. And to a certain extent, I'm really answering that call. That's why I'm running for city council. I believe that my lived experience and my perspective is valuable. Although I am a regular person, I do firmly believe that small acts by regular people absolutely can make a difference. I'm running for city council because our local elections, like, like Olympia City Council, are the most important for the community to really see the real world impact every day. What you do at the local level, people notice immediately. I'm running because the seat belongs to the people, and it should be a reflection of the values of the community. They deserve certainly to have a choice in their representation. I want Olympia to remain a place, the place that I fell in love with, where working families and small businesses can succeed. I think it's important to balance, we can balance economic development with small business success, with environmental stewardship, and, and still maintain rights for workers. We need, you know, housing, people can all afford clean streets and parks, and of course, a city budget that reflects the priorities of the community. I've got a lot of experience in collaboration through my work with the shellfish industry. I have a longstanding commitment to local jobs and, and of course, to the environment. And I believe that our, our best solutions really come from listening to one another, working together, and, you know, ultimately, I'd be honored to go out and earn the trust and the support of the community. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I think you and Darlene may have music to talk about in their histories, so I'll bring this over next to Darlene to answer that same question of introducing yourself and telling us about that, if you remember the question that I asked.
Thank you. I, my name is Darlene Simkins. I grew up in a very, Robert and I actually were born in the same place in Baltimore, but almost immediately, when I was very little, my parents moved to the most tiniest place in West Virginia that no one has heard of, a place called Lowell, West Virginia, with a very small population and extreme poverty. I had kids in my class who had almost gray tinted skin from lack of food, and it was really a difficult time for a lot of people in West Virginia, and I saw a lot of change in that period. I grew up in West Virginia in the seventies and eighties, and I really saw what, you know, economic development could do for kids and do for adults and do for the community. I moved to Olympia in, it's been more than 30 years. I met my husband, fell in love with my husband, fell in love with his wonderful voice, which I would later find out was the kind of accent of Olympia. And I always tell people, I fell in love with my husband at First Sound, and then he took me to the Puget Sound, and I fell in love at first sight with the beautiful Sailor's Sea. So I've just always been in love with Olympia since, since coming here back in 94, 95, and, and being involved in the art scene and music as well. Regarding my budget experience, I've worked for the state of Washington for 27 years. When I first came here, my husband and I did not have a lot of money. We, we started out like working in jobs making about $5 an hour, and you know, we had a, two milk case, milk crates and a chopping block for our like dining room table and a mattress on the floor in our bedroom. But we, we worked our way up. We managed to buy our first home. I've worked for the state of Washington for 27 years. I have managed budgets of varying sizes. I, I think the largest would be when I worked for the Department of Commerce. I was the budget manager for one of the divisions at the Department of Commerce, about a half billion dollar budget, mostly on the capital side. That included energy policy, the state energy policy office, the state broadband office, research services, communications, and other small parts of commerce. And I was a member of the Commerce Budget Coordinator Team that met every week regarding the Commerce Budget. I also have budget experience as the head of payroll for the Senate. I managed the budget for the redistricting commission back in 2001, 2002. I did my first fiscal work back in 1997 with the Department of Transportation. So I have some budget experience with almost every state agency that I've been with, Department of Transportation, Fish and Wildlife. I was involved in the developing the first Washington Interactive Licensing Database System that collects most of the fees that that agency collects through hunting and fishing. And in my current position, I assess the fees and recommend fee changes for Washington State Parks. That is, that was about 66% revenue generating, but now with some changes in the budget, it's going to be moving to more than 75% revenue generating. So I've been doing budget work for a long time. I also worked for, when I worked for the Department of Commerce, in addition to managing the budget for the division, I also was the lead tax analyst for local government. So I have done more than 500 fiscal assessments for state legislation impacting local governments. That includes special districts, counties, and of course, cities. So I worked a lot with the Association of Washington Cities. I managed the MRSC Municipal Research Service Center contract for some time as well, and familiar with a lot of those, you know, fiscal pieces. I was also actively involved with the Washington Finance Officers Association as well. So I have about, I'd say a quarter century of solid budget experience in, at the state level and at the, at the local level. And I've also acquired and managed certain federal grants as well. So quite a bit of experience in that area at just about every level that you can imagine, from, from, you know, entering the data directly in the fiscal system to like getting the grant to evaluating the grants themselves. So why I want to be a candidate, obviously, I want to bring that experience to bear. There's a lot of challenges right now. We experienced a lot of challenges, I think, in the last Trump administration, and I think he's just learned a lot since then. I definitely want to make sure that we maintain our city's priorities, maintain a thriving downtown, we maintain excellent public housing, and we continue with the process of housing first. I think that's very important. I want to make sure we continue to support mental health and, and drug recovery support at our streets. I have talked to a lot of individuals that are homeless, that are struggling. I want to make sure that we continue to have a positive economy for working families and struggling families and seniors on limited incomes. I love Olympia. As I said, I came from a place in the middle of nowhere. I love seeing the lights of Olympia. I love the nightlife, the music, all the arts, and I really want to maintain that wonderful environment we have and make it possible for us to continue to, to thrive as a city. I am really inspired by my children. When they were younger, both of them have taken opportunities to go and testify at city council meetings, and for them, being able to have places where they can live in their own city is really important. My son is currently living in Seattle, and my daughter here lives in Olympia with, trying to raise her, my, our grandchildren. And it's a struggle. It's a struggle as a working family, and I want to make sure that we do everything possible to really listen to all of our constituents, from the very youngest people that are struggling out in the streets, to those small working families, to people on middle incomes, like our state employees that are, you know, also struggling as budgets are shifting and some of their pay is also shifting, and also seniors who are really limited in income and may have concerns about social security and other facets.
Sounds great. Well, thank you very much. We're just barely staying on time, so I appreciate your comments. And since I pointed out your connection with Justin, I just want to point out your connection with Robert because he is an Orioles fan.
Yes.
So this is Olympia. Everybody is like two degrees of separation. So we're gonna go on to our first question, but first I'm gonna mention that this next segment of the program is a series of questions that we'll ask the candidates to respond to. During this segment, we'll be rotating the sequence of which candidate goes first. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond, and we're gonna try to keep that time. So if you see us doing something with our fingers, you'll know that you're getting close to getting to the time limit. Our first question is gonna go to Justin Stang, and that question is, what do you see and what have you heard from Olympia residents as the main challenges facing the Olympia City Council?
Thanks. That's really a great question. I've, you know, started to get out into the community, knocking on doors, really asking folks what keeps them up at night, what they're finding really troubles them, and it ultimately comes back to a number of things consistently. The first and foremost is the affordability component, right? Folks feel like they are burdened with the, with the cost of their, of their rent or their housing, with their childcare, with the cost of goods. And so certainly, folks are out there struggling right now. I think that as a city council, they're looking for new and creative ways that we can try to alleviate some of that affordability crisis. The other part is, is right in line with some of that affordability is that, as a result, you know, we're currently behind in housing units and necessary housing units. The state of Washington is about a million units short of homes currently, with that, that getting bigger every single day. The city of Olympia right now is at 7,000 and falling short. And so certainly, in an effort to make that affordability conversation a little bit more viable, meeting some of those targets is definitely going to be of paramount importance. I think that certainly the, when I listen and talk to the business owners downtown and the residents downtown, they want to make sure that they've got an active and bustling scene that's not only safe for them and the, and the customers at these establishments, but also for the unhoused folks that are down there, right? Public safety is certainly an issue that's important to a lot of folks in this town, and we've got to make sure that we're addressing it every opportunity we can for the greatest benefit for everybody.
Great. Thank you very much. Next in question to Darlene.
So I, I've obviously heard much of the same thing, that those basic living expenses are outpacing incomes. People are in relatively limited incomes or fixed incomes, and they're concerned not only for their current expenses, but for what's gonna happen in the future. Seniors and also young people, people of all ages, are experiencing these concerns. I, for me, and obviously affordable housing is a big part of this, also looking at the, looking at the Workers' Bill of Rights too, and looking at opportunities to see what can we can do to support people, to have more predictable incomes downtown, to have more, to have more equity in their wages for working people. And also, you know, obviously, we need to do more to provide affordable housing. I agree with Justin entirely that we need more units. I also see instances where people, when I talk to people who are homeless, who are unhoused, I'll often ask them, what, what can the city do for you kind of in this moment? And, you know, I hear people that, that people want lower income housing, but people in the moment of being unhoused often just want some initial support, or they'll talk about what caused them to become unhoused in the first place. And I think for a lot of people, there are issues of, I missed a deadline that I needed to get a foreman or things of that nature. So there are opportunities there to kind of help people to, to not become unhoused in the first place. How can we support people in those transitional bridges where they may need to find new housing or where they perhaps have a review that's happening with some of their requirements? So there's some opportunities there to kind of prevent some of the pain and struggling that some of our unhoused folks are, are having right now. I, I've also talked to some people who are really struggling with their mental health. So I think there's a lot of opportunities there to improve the mental health or, for people that are struggling out in the streets. And of course, also looking at, I have a lot of concern about reductions at the federal level in supports for drug intervention and prevention. I've seen a lot of folks that are trying to self-medicate in ways that aren't probably going to be sustainable for them in the long term. And these are often young people between the ages of, you know, 15 and 27. And many of them are actually, grew up in the Olympia area. It's not just people that are traveling, although those are also travelers as well. So there's lots of opportunities, I think, to make small improvements there.
Well, thank you very much. Robert, we're gonna go to you with the same question. You obviously have a little bit of a different view of what's facing the city council since you've been on it, but also would like to hear, as we did from Darlene and Justin, what you've heard from constituents.
Yeah, so as a city, we are a data-driven city. You know, we do polling pretty consistently. We follow what's going on. And so when I go out and knock on doors, I have a pretty clear picture of, of when I, when someone says they have a problem with, their biggest issue is housing, I can talk to them about our work on the Regional Housing Council or our grant program that we just created around affordable housing. So for me, I think the, the biggest thing is the affordability crisis, right? You know, we've done the polling, we've taught, I've knocked on doors, you know, it's housing, childcare, and transportation, the top three factors. And that's both in the data, and that's both on what I talk to people when I knock on doors. We have to think about housing affordability for working class people. That means lowering the barriers for construction and development. That means trying to find ways to work with our partners like Habitat for Humanity and Families First Center. That means, right now, I'm working on a grant program with the school district around piloting and studying our childcare gap, right? Because we have a lot of people that have, you have the E-CAP program at the state, and then you have a benefits cliff, and then you have private childcare. And so as a city and with our partners at the school district, you know, I'm working on some of that work too. I also hear other concerns beyond affordability. So that includes looking at our climate goals. We have to meet our climate goals as a city. Our public believes in us hitting those climate goal, meeting those climate goals. In order to meet those climate goals, we have to do the work as a city in, in installing infrastructure so that people don't have to buy a Tesla to drive around the city. They don't have to own an EV. That means making public transportation accessible. That means putting in the sidewalks and bike lanes, and, and that includes making it safer for folks to get around, right? That means safe routes for kids. And then lastly, I guess the other part of that is the safety. Public safety is a big concern, right? That goes hand in hand with the homeless crisis, and it also goes hand in hand with speeding through neighborhoods. I hear it all the time from all types of people that the concerns are, we need to meet those needs. People, people are afraid of speeding through their neighborhood. They're afraid of not having safe routes, and, you know, people need to be able to feel safe going downtown. So that means being compassionate while also, you know, ensuring that we make the downtown approachable and safe for all. And so that's what we've been doing as a council, and that's what I will continue to do in order to make sure that Olympia is an accessible and welcoming city.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that answer. And to move to our second question, we're gonna change up the order. This will be posed first to Darlene. Has to do with the downtown area. And the question is, we've tried to revitalize downtown Olympia for many years with limited success. What are your specific ideas for how to do this when we're now facing a decline in city revenues from federal and state government as well as from our own taxes? Darlene, you're muted. You're muted, Darlene.
I got that off. Thank you for catching me there. Sorry about that. I, first I wanted to say, I think we have made some progress since 2021. Obviously, we have some, seen improvements in the downtown and our downtown community. I have a few that I've, I've gone and asked some of the downtown business owners, and one thing that I've heard is they'd like to see less barriers relating to parking, so more opportunities to get people closer to their businesses without necessarily having to spend a large amount of time parking. There is some perception that that is a barrier to business for certain downtown businesses. So, you know, what can we do to make it easier for people to get downtown to those businesses? And, and I realize, of course, that we have limited parking and that there are environmental challenges with adding parking. So how do we do that efficiently in a way that works for those businesses, for the people who work for those businesses as well that have to park downtown? I also see making sure that we have very safe policing. One of the things that I'm running on is compassionate policing, which is not, you know, going easy on crime, but really looking at how do we help the city of Olympia police to have the tools they need to work with unhoused individuals or individuals who may have mental health problems, who, you know, in, are downtown, not in their best moments, right? When they're under the most amount of stress and when it may not be easy for people to, to witness someone, you know, having a breakdown or some, or, or going through withdrawal or having a reaction, or even in worst cases, a drug overdose. So making sure that we have the supports in place. I've seen the city of Olympia police be extremely compassionate with, with individuals downtown, and I've also seen less compassionate responses. So I think we can do more to really foster the best that we have with our downtown ambassadors and with the city of Olympia police, to really make it a more welcoming and safe place for everyone from, regardless of your housing, your housing status. Additionally, I think opportunities to, to create more vibrant downtown events. I think we have some great downtown events, Procession of the Species, Arts Walk, the Wooden Boat Fair, some more opportunities to let people know about those events and encourage people to be downtown for those events, and perhaps make it easier for them to park or get to those events. People may not always realize how easy it can be to, to get in close to those events without having to fight traffic. So I think we have some opportunities there. When we tell people about events, to also tell them how to get to them easily. You are muted, or I...
Sorry about that. My bad. So next up would be Robert answering that same question. Thank you for your answer, Darlene. Robert, your opinion about downtown revamping?
Yeah, revitalizing, revamping. We've done a lot of work in the last... Um, we've done a lot of work in the last few years to kind of focus on this. You know, we have the, like I said, the Olympia Strong Plan has a lot of details that involve this. And recently, we've worked to with the Squawson Island Tribe to build a convention center downtown. That'll be coming in the next eighteen months is when the shovel will come in and then we'll see a investment over there. So for us as a city, it's both a combination of what we do as a city, but what we do with our partners. Uh, I've walked uh the streets many times with um both the past and present uh Director of the Olympia Downtown Alliance. And I've chatted with them about what can we do as a city, right? We have an ambassador program, we have crew, um we have officers that walk the streets, you know. This is, this is part of it, but the other part of it is also finding ways to fill in those vacancies in our downtown. How do we, how do we ensure that small businesses are strong in our downtown, but we also have those vacancies? How do we make it where the downtown is approachable to everyone, right? Part of that is focusing on building that parking garage that we planned on doing years ago when we bought the Ben Moore Building. Part of that is uh our relationship with Squawson Tribe on the other side of downtown and providing a place for people to visit the city. Part of it is building affordable housing in the downtown, getting to building condo buildings and not just apartment buildings, so people have a homeownership. Getting it to a volume where our small businesses are able to be open on Mondays, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, and then they're not just struggling to get by. Downtown is the economic center of the county and for our neighboring cities. And so for us as a city, we have to ensure that we meet those goals. That means private part, private public partnerships. That means going forward and filling in those plans. That means talking with our economic director um and having the clear goals to meet those needs in our city. There is a variety of things that need to be done. Additionally, we have to strengthen our relationship with the port because the port owns a lot of land in our downtown, right? What does this, what do residents want from us when we, when they come to downtown? What are the reasons why people aren't coming downtown? That is also critical because one of the worst things a small business can hear downtown is I never go downtown. Or I never go downtown because of A, B or C reason. We really need to follow that and be compassionate. And you know, when it comes to infrastructure in the city, I very similarly, I'm gonna close on this. Very similarly, people have to feel welcome in a place, not just that we tell them it's welcoming, that we tell them a stat, people have to feel comfortable. They have to feel welcome in a way that is accessible and they can get there anytime by any means. And so for me, getting there is the most important factor. Anyway.
Thank you. I I I really appreciate your passion about this. Um, but we have to move on to letting Justin chime in on great ideas for the downtown. We may solve this problem tonight. Thank you, Justin. You're uh next up. Good, you're unmuted. Thank you.
That, thank you. Obviously, the uh business community downtown revitalization of downtown, that's, as Robert said, an economic hub and the backbone of our community. Ultimately, I think that in order to to generate the revenue, the city needs to stabilize its budget and provide the resources at the level that that we're hoping to, that we need to really strengthen and support those businesses downtown. One of the great ideas that I've had uh in looking at similar cities of our size is that I'd love to work with the O D A to uh to to promote a local shopping app, right? I think that we could have an app that incentivizes people to invest their money in the community and even has a rewards program so that when they shop locally, uh they get a discount to continue shopping locally. Cities of our size with a one-dollar investment have seen a nine-dollar return on that investment. So build a, build a small app, encourage people to shop locally, reward them for doing so. And in turn, uh, you know, you'll, you'll generate, generate revenue downtown. Um, obviously, beer gardens and night markets. Right now, the city's only issuing two beer garden permits per year. And I think, I think we can do a little bit better there. We could make events and welcoming spaces. We've got a great arts walk and procession in the spring. We've got a great arts walk in the fall, but we could have a few more night markets with live music, with art, um getting people downtown and excited. Um, obviously, we could have pop-ups. There's a ton of breweries in this town. There's breweries downtown that would love to have pop-up components to really generate buzz and and give, get uh people something to be excited about coming down and attending. And then obviously, the programs that we're utilizing currently that are working, like the Crisis Response Unit, that's got a really positive response uh or 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 uh reception from not only the business community, but from the members of the community. And I think uh making sure that we're investing uh that money and expanding scalably programs that are having a positive impact is a, is a fantastic step to take to really continue that revitalization effort. Um, I think a lot of this happens in collaboration. It's bringing the business owners and the O D A to the table with the residents of downtown and hearing what people's ideas are because we've got a lot of really smart and talented people. We've got a world-class staff at the City of Olympia. And I think once we bring those people together, we can really start to come up with energetic ideas to get people downtown and to get people excited to be downtown.
Great, thank you very much. I think we've got some great ideas for moving forward. And moving forward to our next topic is the next topic. And we've already touched a bit on affordability, quite a bit on this. But I'd like to pose a a question about this and let Robert uh go first. We'd like you to talk about further about the affordability um crisis and some specifics about policies that are needed to address this for working class and small businesses. Uh, possibly bringing in the idea of the Workers' Bill of Rights, how that uh plays into affordability and the interaction between uh small business and the city government. So Robert, you're first up.
So uh, yeah, the affordability crisis is both a cost uh problem and both and an income problem, right? So you have, people can afford to live here, but they also can't afford, they also don't have the wages that that get them there, right? So I've been very supportive and openly supportive and I've been knocking on doors and getting signatures for the Workers' Bill of Rights because I believe that Olympia needs to be affordable for all working people here. Uh, additionally to that, um our small businesses are not doing well even before a minimum wage increase. They're not, they're struggling. Uh, they just don't meet the volume downtown. Even most of our small businesses are not open during Mondays and Tuesdays. A lot of that is because we're just not seeing the amount of numbers. People are nervous of the economy. So part of that is, you know, looking at what can we do as a city uh around B and L, for example? Right now, we're having a conversation at the city about how do we take B and L and make it progressive? How do we adjust our business occupation attacks so that the businesses that make less than five hundred thousand dollars or seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, we're still debating the numbers? And zero it out for the smaller businesses and then double it to point zero two and use that program to help fund aid and support for small businesses. They're still paying off their loans, they're still getting through it. Because we both need those local businesses, but we also need people to be able to afford to live in the city. We still need working-class people able to buy the goods and services to keep the small businesses around. And so as a city, a policy that we've been working on for many years is Olympia Strong. And Olympia Strong is just a resiliency plan. It's a highly studied plan that we've been working on for probably five, six years now. And that includes uh training for our small businesses, partnerships with the Community College in Evergreen, uh working with uh the O D A, uh even working with the Chamber on some things, on training and 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 working together to ensure that we're meeting the goals of our city. That means, you know, looking at affordability crisis on housing, right? I'm, I piloted a program this last year to put more funding aside so that small builders can, you know, actually afford to build the small buildings that we're missing in our community, right? Um, whether that's ADUs or missing metal. So there's a lot of things that we as a city can do to ensure that both people can afford to live here and have livable wages, but also in support our small businesses because both factors are key to having a stable economy.
Thank you very much. Pose that same question to Justin.
Thank you very much. I I really appreciate this question. You know, for me, a lot of the affordability here in Olympia stems from, from, from housing, right? If you've got fifty-four percent of the community renting of that fifty-four percent, you know, fifty percent of this community is is cost burden. If you ask folks what their number one expense is, they're gonna tell you it's their mortgage, they're gonna tell you it's their rent. I think figuring out what we can do about increasing the supply of housing uh to create um a market shift in some of that cost is is going to be of paramount importance. And the only way to really do that is to uh is to really honor sort of that, that changes that are happening at the state level in the middle housing. I think we've got a lot of space here from a land use perspective that we need to really examine on infill, on on grandfathering ADUs that are already in existence, in in incentivizing folks to add additional units. And particularly to make sure that uh individuals uh and small, small developers like Habitat or like uh, you know, small architectural firms like the Artisans Group can still participate and come to the table without excessive burdens from impact fees or or more importantly, time, you know? Time is such a valuable thing that if you wait multiple years for permits or for some of the other things to get going, that the cost of construction ends up being um perhaps too burdensome. And what happens when you do that is that we we're left with only large-scale developers that don't necessarily have um the, the, the margin uh or they do have the margin to to have that housing come in, uh let fewer units at a, at a higher price point, right? Obviously, we need a lot more units um in order to make that, that affordability conversation kind of work. But being that that's folks' most uh, one of their highest um highest cost centers over the course of the month, it's certainly something that would have the biggest impact on on reducing their monthly budget.
Great, thank you very much. Good ideas. Now, Darlene, you get to take a stab at that question, and you're muted.
Thank you, Ed. I, first I wanted to say that I also strongly support the Workers' Bill of Rights. Uh, we need to see those wages increase uh and I think twenty dollars an hour with the proposal and the effective date is would make a giant difference for families struggling and in need here. Uh, obviously, we need more housing as well, uh more housing supports. I also believe that we need to have a more progressive uh B and O tax. And we also, as far as supporting uh the downtown businesses, there's been a lot of business churn, especially since um COVID nineteen. I remember uh the Olympia as it was, you know, prior to that, where you had this huge uh lunch crowds that would come in. Uh, you know, when all the um workers were working in the offices and would go and, you know, take their lunch. And this was a huge part of um the income of small downtown businesses, and a lot of that has changed. So, you know, how do we get people that are no longer eating their lunch downtown because they don't work downtown uh to maybe come down here and recreate downtown to uh? So I think getting more people to eat and recreate downtown, uh not just in the evening necessarily, but you know, throughout the day uh with their families on the weekends. How do we make it more family-friendly um for families to come downtown? And how do we support businesses to really um to defining their kind of niche markets? And and what are the barriers that are keeping families and people from coming downtown? You know, I I talked to women who state that they're not comfortable coming downtown by themselves. So how do we help, you know, women to feel more comfortable being downtown by themselves, to bring their children downtown? You know, and how do we make those businesses happen? I I think that beer gardens are great. Uh, I I totally support the idea of having more beer gardens and having more of an exciting nightlife. But if all we're offering is options that require alcohol, then no one with people under the age of twenty-one will be welcome. So we need to make sure that we have a balance of different kinds of business opportunities for people. So they don't just see it as a place to go to hang out when you're young, you know, and you're twenty-one to twenty-five, but also as a place where you can bring your kids and kind of be uh enjoying Olympia and recreating an Olympia throughout your life cycle from um from, from basically baby to to senior. Uh, so I think that's very important, creating that, creating that environment, creating that place. Uh, and also people who maybe aren't, can't have alcohol for other reasons.
I I think that's a uh great place to end this question if I can. Thank you very much. It was great answers. And I know that I'd like to shift gears and uh ask us to address climate change. This question's first gonna go to Justin Stain. The city's goals for its climate action plan are not on track, but the largest contributor to this problem uh is reported to be transportation emissions. Uh, what needs to change overall and how will you help bring about that change? And Justin, you're muted.
Yeah, sorry, I just, I like to write down the question to make sure I can, I've got it kind of in detail here. Yeah, I think when you look at climate change, you've got to break it down into a a few different, uh, a few different aspects. Obviously, there's the adaptability component, uh what we're doing as a city to adjust so that as the climate is changing, we are prepared. And of course, there's the mitigation. Uh, what are we doing now to stop making this problem uh worse uh moving forward? Obviously, you know, based on the fact that we're a a city on the water, coastal flooding and uh and sea level rise are going to be of paramount importance. And I think that um, you know, increasing some of the, obviously, um, some of the density in some of our neighborhoods uh is certainly going to help um in in some of that mitigation simply because if uh if you're able to add mixed-use commercial into some of the neighborhoods, you've got the ability to save people short trips in their, in their automobiles. Um, obviously, we've got to have a strong partnership with Puget Sound Energy. Right now, they are uh one of the biggest uh uh energy providers obviously in the, in the community and have the ability to to help us really meet those goals depending on uh the work that is they're doing. So I think having a collaborative um and friendly relationship with them to make sure that that they are are pulling their weight as a partner uh to help us reach these goals is of paramount importance. And of course, you know, ultimately, if transportation is the, is the number one factor, you've got to get uh, get, get ways, figure out ways to um have people reduce trips. Maybe that's expanding uh public transportation options or public transit. Uh, that could even include having uh additional, additional bus routes or um or additional uh transit centers in other areas of the city to make uh that commute and that travel a little bit easier for uh for the residents.
Sounds great. The uh same question concerning climate, uh next goes to Darlene.
Thank you. I I I was very lucky to, when I started in my career, to be one of the first people to be in the Commute Trip Reduction Program. I got to go every day and talk to the coordinator and tell him all my thoughts. And I uh I I'm very excited to see how much things have changed over the years and how much uh things have fluctuated with all of the changes in funding. As far as climate change, I, obviously, we've got issues with our being a coastal on-the-water city because it's not just about the flooding that we see. It's also about the significant cost to our infrastructure, to our stormwater systems uh and to our infrastructure under the ground, um our drinking water. And you know, we need to plan for that, and I think we've done some work there, but there's always going to be the need to look at, you know, how are we managing our stormwater runoff um and keeping that from, you know, polluting the the salish seas? Uh, regarding uh multimodal, obviously, investments in transit, uh making sure that we have people living close to transit where we can have predictable buses. Uh, we know that when buses are less than fifteen minutes, people are far less likely to use them. When they go to less than half an hour, even less likely. When you go to bus routes only coming once an hour, even less so. So you know, if you want to have high usage of transit, we also need to have um high response times for transit and people to to get on those buses faster. Even a five-minute difference can be significant. So investments of with our partners there. I would say as a EV car owner, I uh, I, this is an air, a passion for me. I traveled to Europe and um took a bunch of footage and really looked at like, how are people managing electric cars in, in Spain, France and England and also here? And one of the things that's been really interesting to me is people don't, who are EV drivers, often it's a struggle to know where an EV uh charger is and also if it's, if it's in use, because we do see vandalism of these structures as well. So I'd say, you know, it's funny, we don't have any issue finding out where the gas stations are, but they're all well, pretty well signed on all of our freeways. So I would like to see a lot more signage for people uh to really know where these uh EV stations are. And I think that's gonna help people to be more comfortable to get out of their electric, to out of their gas cars and into electric cars if they can see where they are before they buy one. It shouldn't be a leap of faith. And as someone who's been stranded on the side of the road, I know.
Electric car owner, I agree with you. And now we're gonna move that climate question on to uh Robert.
Yeah, so. Yeah, I I'm sorry, Darlene, that you were stranded. That 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 sounds awful. Uh, I'm, uh, anyway. Uh, one of the ways that, you know, we can do it is, so I'm on the Interstate Transit Authority Board, and next year we are looking at expanding routes, you know, um, I gonna pl-. You know, I'm going to plug it. We are taking information on that. We are looking at expanding our routes, particularly on routes that see the most amount of use. So Martin Way, College Street, in Lacey, Black Lake Boulevard, heavy trafficked areas with heavy usage. We're looking at adding routes in order to meet those needs. We're going to be expanding them next year. I'm hoping to continue to work on that plan and ensure that we meet those needs around our public transportation expansion. Because people who live in places that use public transportation and walk and ride bikes, they do it because it's the most convenient way to get around. You know, if we're asking people to make changes in their lives, we have to make it clear and, and convenient and accessible to them. And so that also includes even small investments such as working on our sidewalks. We just got a sidewalk analysis for the citywide. We're not meeting those needs. We have a huge, massive sidewalk backlog. I've been in conversation about looking at how do we work with Lacey and Tumwater on this? Because they also have a sidewalk plan where they need to fill in their goals. Can we work together to get the sidewalks done within, you know, much faster than what it says in the plan, which is 100 years, which is, which is not doable for me as a council member. Also, you know, this also includes land use as Justin was talking about, you know? This means looking at places like Martin Way and making it a place to actually be outside of a car. It's not a walkable place. It's definitely not a place to ride a bike. You know, how do we get, fill in those places with housing? And how do we get them places that we'd want to walk around and be at? That's just, that's just part of the climate plan is to make sure that we make places accessible, you know? That making sure our neighborhoods have, you know, small, you know, coffee shops and grocery stores. I know plenty of people in Southeast Olympia that would love to have a grocery store because they don't have it. They have to drive places. And so there's a lot of those needs that we need to make. And lastly, I will say that because I'm both on the Sea Rise Plan and I'm also on the, the Sea Rise Committee and I'm also on the Climate Collaborative, I've been working on this for the last year and I see where we are and it's not good enough. So we're going to have to come up with some more funding to meet these goals and meet these needs. Because frankly, if, we're just not doing it enough. So as long as I'm on council, we're going to continue to work on that.
Perfect. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Our last question is going to first go to Darlene. And this question is, is there anything we haven't touched on that you would consider important to address?
We touched on it to some extent, but I would say, public safety. I, I know that we are in the process of developing a committee that's going to be looking at police actions and reviewing police actions. That's an area of high interest to me. Back in 2021, right after the George Floyd murder, you saw a lot of cities instituting curfews. And, you know, that 10 o'clock curfew did not work. It, it damaged cities. I think it encouraged protesters to, to really go out and protest the curfew. So I think it just extended a protest. And I really feel like a lot of, a lot of actions were taken against residents that weren't really necessary for public safety and discouraged people to go downtown and, and to visit businesses that were already struggling due to social distancing. So one of my interests, of course, is making sure that we look at better options for public safety. At the federal level, our federal dollars are, have been reduced as far as drug prevention and intervention. And that's extremely concerning is that will result in more deaths in our streets and we want to do whatever possible to avoid that. I know of individuals who have in the nearby area who have overdiced in the last month. And, you know, we don't, that's just not the kind of thing we want to see in our community. We don't want to see that for our children. We don't want to comfort their friends and families. It's just the kind of thing that mothers never get over. And we never get over seeing that in our children's friends. So that is huge for me. My daughter was exercising her First Amendment rights in 2020 during the, during the protests and I saw people getting hit with rubber bullets. And I just, we absolutely cannot have that again in our city under any circumstance.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your passion. Sorry that your daughter had to be involved in that. Next person in this, for this question is Robert.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I also wanted to acknowledge Darlene's compassion around this. I really do appreciate her compassion around these issues. I have to say, the issue that I would like to talk about, I think the thing that I would focus if I had another question asked of me is to think about where we are in the future as a city, right? We're working on a comprehensive plan, which includes everything from parks to our for housing to climate. I mean, we are, we are working on a huge amount of work at the city right now and meeting those, those needs of the future. It's why it's called the, it goes to 2045, because we have to think about the future of our city. For me, part of the reason why I'm on council and part of the reason why I'll continue to do public service is because I believe that we need to make this place, this, this city a holistic place for everyone. We, we need to make it affordable for all. We need to make it accessible for all. That means folks need to be able to live here and have families here and go to our wonderful schools and go to our parks and cross the street without the fear of speeding. That means being able to get places and not, and, and without any issues. I have friends that are handicapped and can't get around most places because of our, our sidewalk infrastructure. I know plenty of people who they end up having to spend an hour, two hours of their day commuting, which affects our climate because they can't afford to be here. As a council member, I want us to be in the next 10 years, the next 15 years, a city where anyone could live here, where anyone feels welcome, where, you know, this is why we're a sanctuary city. This is why I'm compassionate about continuing to make sure that we're a sanctuary city. So that people who live anywhere else in the world can come here and know that Olympia is the best city in the world and that they love being here because I love living here and I want their families to live here for generations. And so I'm, I ought to say the most important compassionate thing for me is ensuring that we're the city that anyone wants to live.
Thank you very much. Getting a lot of passion on these answers. Justin, that puts a lot of pressure on you. Your last up.
Oh, no, no, no pressure at all. I think, I think obviously, you know, the city of Olympia has a lot of, a lot of real challenges, a lot of things that are going to take a vast effort. And I would say that it's not so much for me, what's one other thing? But just as important as the what we're doing, I think is the how we're doing it, right? For me, I think that ensuring that in order to solve these problems, we're bringing the most, the most community members, the most business owners, the most folks that have an impact, including the Squawson Island Tribe and then the Squali Tribe to the table in order to collaboratively build solutions. Look, I'll be the first one to say, I don't have the answers to a lot of these problems. There have been a lot of people that have worked, been working on these for a number of years. But it's going to take a heavy lift from everybody in our community. And, and that, that collaboration and that partnership, that everybody getting their sleeves rolled up and getting to work together is exceptionally important. And it's really the only way we're going to tackle some of these serious challenges. I really want to be the person that, that, that starts to build a team and has a personality that can bring people together and really examine how we can do this as a, as a community together, because it's, it's the only way to really, to really get the, the job done.
Thank, thank you very much. We, we were going to offer some time. We're, we're at the one-hour mark on this event so far. So I don't want to make us run over, but we were going to offer some time if candidates would like to make a closing statement. To some degree, this last round offered some, excuse me, I'm, some noise in my house here. So that last question offered the closing statements, but would any of you like to make any further statements? First, we'll start with Robert. Anything further?
Yeah, so I'm running to stay on Olympia City Council to retain my seat because I've, as I've said, I love the city. I, I believe in the city. I'm raising my sign here. I, I passionately believe that we can be, and we are one of the greatest cities in the world and we will continue to be there as long as we continue to work together. I'm running because the affordability crisis has affected just about everyone I know on a variety of levels. I'm also running because, you know, we have a climate crisis and we need to ensure that, you know, we, we have, you know, beautiful, clean air and we have wonder, you know, we don't go through such hot, long, you know, weekends like we just went through. I mean, I'm hoping that we can do what we can as a, to, to lessen the harm on our environment. And lastly, I want us, our city to be an equitable city, an accessible city, a city that meets its, its goals and actually doesn't just say them, doesn't just say that we're a sanctuary city, doesn't just say that we are a city that, that believes in these things, but make sure that any person in the community knows that they have those rights and have those freedoms in our community. And so, yeah, if you want to know more about me, it's robertvannerbull.com. Always reach out. I love having coffee with members of the community and I appreciate Olympian Divisible for having this interview. Yeah.
Thank you. Justin, you're next up.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak with you today. You know, obviously, as I've shared, I'm running for Olympia City Council because I truly believe in this community, not, not just the version we have today. You know, certainly the version that I fell in love with, but I think there's, there's a version too that I, we all know that it can become when we work together. You know, I opened up the YMCA before sunrise. I sold oysters all across the country. I now advocate for clean water and a sustainable local economy. And I've always worked to build something better for the people that are around me. And, and ultimately, this, this campaign isn't about me. It's about us as a community. It's about making sure that our working families and our small businesses, the future generations, have a voice in the decisions that shape their lives. And I think we can make real progress on housing, on public safety, on, you know, stewarding our environment. And of course, like responsible budgeting at the city level is where we get to all of that. And we can do it intentionally and we can certainly do it together. I think, you know, Olympia deserves thoughtful, practical leadership. I'm, I'm someone that listens, I collaborate and I work hard. And I'm ready to serve in that way for the residents of the city of Olympia and I'd be honored to earn the trust of the community and, and of course, their vote. I thank you all very much for your time. And of course, I've got some events coming up. You can find a lot of information at JustinStang.com and I'm on Facebook and on Instagram and we'll be at Pride cooking burgers. And I'll see you all on Saturday, I would imagine.
Thank you very much. Darlene, can you finish us up with that question?
Yes. Thank you so much for, again, for inviting all of us here and inviting me here. I also love Olympia and have, want Olympia to stay a great and vibrant city. I, I raised my children here. I'm lucky enough to see my grandchildren growing up here. And I want a wonderful, I want at least as good or better of an experience for them than I had growing up. I don't want that for all citizens, for all our children. I also deeply feel honored to be a part of this process. I'm honored to get to talk to Olympia residents, to really listen to them, to learn from them. Every day I learn more on the campaign trail here, talking to people and also to be a leader, to really lead in a way that where you're a leader and a follower at the same time, and really able to serve and bring my budget experience and bring my experience bringing people together and collaborating together, so we can build a better future here for everyone in Olympia.
Great. Thank you very much. That's all for the interview. I'd like to thank all three of you for taking the time to answer the questions and taking the time to attend this. I'm going to turn the last part of this event over to Edie, who is going to wrap up with some announcements.
So I just want to say thank you all so much. Olympia is so lucky to have three amazing candidates running for position six. You guys rock. And thank you for your time tonight and, you know, for willing to give up countless hours for meetings and exciting conversations with your fellow residents. We, as Ed said, will have a vote on June 21st and a couple of days thereafter. And people will be looking at the website to look at these videos as well as your questionnaire and a candidate profile. And one of you will be selected to be endorsed by Olympian Divisible. And then what you can expect is a wildly enthusiastic group of Olympian Divisible people who will help you with your campaign. And so we will be in touch with your campaign manager. We wave signs, we doorbell, we make phone calls. So you can expect to have our endorsement go more than just Olympian Divisible approves, but to have boots on the ground. So again, thank you all so much. It was wonderful to hear from each and every one of you tonight.
Thank you. And with that, I will try to pause or stop.